Tell any board to call.
Don Nizem.
Here.
Robin Riley.
Here.
Anna Roland.
Robin.
Judy Trude.
Present.
Nancy Simershi.
Here.
Anything on further comment? No? Go to three reports, digital board discussions, sudden emergency response plan or four basis.
Okay, hopefully everybody's having a great day today. I'm presenting on the Chase Moore sudden cardiac arrest site plans for grade seven through 12. So, the sites affected by this plan are west, east, and our high school. What this is, is an update to existing law. So, what it, the existing law, 2015, which is Senate Bill 239, it required all coaches to do annual training. It required all athletes to have cardiac arrest information sheets for themselves and parents, and then a sign off sheet for acknowledgement. So, the update to this, it requires, still requires coaches. Now, it requires athletic trainers, school nurses to complete sudden cardiac arrest annual training. And the platforms must be approved by the SDE. I've listed a couple of examples up there. NFATS is the one that athletics has been using since 2015 to train coaches annually. Sports Safety International is another one, American Red Cross, and American Heart Association, which we utilize the American Red Cross and American Heart Association for AED, CPR, and first aid trainings. So, that's nothing new to the district. The site plans, what it is, seven through 12 develop this sudden cardiac emergency response plan formulated by a site administrator. So, what we did in this process is called in all of our school safety leaders in the buildings that lead up all of our safety committees, and we worked together based on the new law and a site plan to make this thing effective for each site. The training required is first aid, CPR, and AED. Within each site plan, what you're required to do is develop a team. And the team of people must have these three elements of training in order to be on it and control this effectiveness of it. So, what is technically called the acronym, we call it CERT Team, Cardiac Emergency Response Team. We have to have means to activate the team for cardiac, sudden cardiac arrest, how we implement the AED system, placement in the building, how do we communicate the information, disseminate it to staff. My role in this is to ensure that we have proper functioning AEDs throughout our buildings. We make sure that we have means of communication. Two means of communication that we're going to use for this is, one, our end con system to activate our team, and the second one would be through our RAV app. Another additional requirement of this team is to drill, actually conduct a drill. We felt that it was wise of us to have a team spread out across the building of individuals that were certified in these three areas, because some of our buildings are a great distance, and we need somebody to be able to get an AED quickly, between one to three minutes, if necessary. So, additionally within this, and this is something that we've already had in practice, based on our Riley's rule that came out a few years ago, is our emergency action plans for athletics. It's making sure that everybody knows within the team, and our first responders know that we have AED placements, who's on the team, who's to respond to it, what's the best entrance and exit from a facility. So, these things are already in place. So, this was a very particular or easy process to get going. I've also included our site teams. The requirement is five to six individuals, and you can have as many as you want. As you can see on this list, Wes took liberty and they included several people. And the rationale between, for that is because when you hit seventh hour in athletic period takes in. So, if you have coaches in your building, they're not going to be there at the end of the day. They have other people that can step up and help. Oh, are you still looking at that? Okay, I've also listed some resources on here. Much of this information is going to fall under the Oklahoma State Department of Health. I've listed where we found a template to do our cardiac emergency response plan. Has all sorts of information under each one of these. I listed the Senate Bill 1921 on there too, if anybody would like to read that. And then I included our PCPS athletics page where we have the link for the informational sheet and acknowledgement for student athletes and parents. Any questions?
Sounds like you covered it all.
Awesome. Well, I think our next steps will be working with our elementary sites in getting their cardiac emergency response team. So, I would expect to see that in the next few months as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next out on the floor is the superintendent for technical board discussion and actions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hope everyone's had a great day. It's very near Pompous City Public Schools. We've got a lot of good things going on. It's been a while since we last got together and talked. Callie, I hope you didn't show up on Monday nights looking for a board meeting.
Uh, no.
Okay, good.
I got someone.
Good, good, perfect. No, no, I was a little nervous. This group, you didn't get, I was a little nervous, I think if they communicate with you. But I wanted to make sure we got that advertised. Hey, October's a big month for public schools. In Pompous City Public Schools, it's not an exception to that. I want to give you an enrollment update. This will be kind of how our funding is shaped up for the next school year. But I got the first one is enrollment by side updates. You can look there, I tracked over, I presented the last four, I have the last 15 years of enrollment by sides. But it gets a little messy, because one, I don't know if it's all captured on October 1, but I can promise you all of those are the October 1 numbers from '21 up through '24. Everything in green shows an increase from the year prior, not necessarily a trending upwards, but just an increase from the last 12 months snapshot back. The big number to take a look at is the 254 parentheses. That means we are down 254 students than we had this time last year. Now, I, you know, it's hard to kind of get an exception on this of where in particular those kids came from, so I thought it would be helpful to see based off of grade levels, where those kids may be coming or going. If you follow the blue arrow, if you see a blue arrow linking the year prior to the subsequent year, that shows an increase. So, I only highlighted where we're seeing an increase in grade levels. So, you can see kindergarten obviously increased over the last two years. First grade numbers have increased the last two years. Fourth grade increased just this year. We saw an increase in the number of sixth graders and seventh graders based off of when they were fifth graders and sixth graders the year prior. Does that make sense? There's a necessary, we don't have a bigger sixth grade class this year, but we have more sixth graders than we had fifth graders this time last year. So, just kind of seeing, you know, data tells a story, and it really wanted to help see that, what story we're trying to tell here. We lost a lot of kids at our high school this past year. We had a big high school class, and a lot of them have moved on to other schools or other options or other communities to, it's their educational means net, but just kind of give you a snapshot of where those kids, where we saw a loss of those kids. Pre-K continues to tell a story, guys, and I highlighted this last May, that we have decisions tonight as a school board, as a community, if our community's responding to the pre-K center, or are we just not having kids anymore in Pompous City? You can see there in kindergarten, is that, is this an anomaly here where 252 is the new exception or a new standard for the number of kindergartners we have? Or are we going to get back into those 300 numbers that we're accustomed to seeing in first grade through 12? So, just some, you know, good discussion to be having as a board. I know our team looks at that quite a bit. We look at it from a perspective of barriers to education, and do we have barriers that are preventing parents or families that are picking Pompous City Public Schools that we can help eliminate or provide opportunities for them in Pompous City? Now, oh, go ahead.
Look at that, look at what we have for kindergarten.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Let me do it.
Yeah, it's like a, I wish I knew, I could tell you guys, but I knew what every one of those families, you know, why we have 321 last year in kindergarten, or we have 325 in first grade this year.
Yeah, kindergarten, that means we had pre-K, we had 218s.
Yeah, so, there was about 35 more that showed up.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, I don't know, I don't know what we're trying to gauge and get that community input on pre-K center. But I did think it'd be helpful too to look at enrollment by signs by each neighborhood school and secondary school, and compare that to what the rolling nine-year average is. So, in that first column, the one-year difference, that represents what their enrollment is up or down compared to a year ago at this time. So, Washington there is down 14 kids compared to one year ago. Garfield is up 17 kids, Trout's up 25, the high school, like I said, 163 down one year ago at this time. But, let's look at the average enrollment over nine years. So, Washington over the nine years, the past nine years, that's in pre-COVID, during COVID, after COVID, is about 252, 253 students. So, when you compare this year's enrollment number of Washington to what the average enrollment is in the last nine years, we're down about 54 kids at Washington pre-K. Garfield comparing to nine-year average, we're down 41 kids in that neighborhood. Trout, about 37. So, you can look through there at all those, and then you can see the high school were actually up compared to the nine-year average of about 22 kids, spread over the fourth grade, so about five or six kids there compared to the nine-year average. I thought nine years, one, I can guarantee that those nine years were snapshots of our pillar one. And then two, once we get too far deep, Washington pre-K was closed and more of a site for construction housing elementary schools that were being remodeled, that we didn't have a pre-K center during that time. So, I just thought it would be good data as a board to look at there. I think that tells us a story that our, you know, population, our community is trending down. Or, the other thing that came along during the last nine years is the advent of virtual charter schools, and families choosing that as their option instead of choosing Pompous City Public Schools. So, just something to be mindful of. I thought that was interesting data to review. Any questions about that? Anything that stands out to you all, board members?
We're able to track if they've gone out to a virtual or a different charter school.
Yes, we are. So, I have here incoming transfers and outgoing transfers of Pompous City Public Schools. Incoming, we've opened about 58 students, and outgoing, 187 left. Now, that doesn't include the 200 and some of them out of state that we just don't have information on, that they, that they went to Texas or California. Now, registration, if they request records, we keep a note of that. And if it's a non-state request, but sometimes states do not request records or if they went to virtual schools or not. But I thought this tells a good story too, where our kids are going. If they're choosing a local school, where those might be. So, big ones at Kildare, McCord. But McCord guided us both ways. When we take, we accept 37 McCord kids, and they take 32, 39, oh, 32 of ours. Kildare, we welcomed four this year, but they took a good chunk of ours, 39.
Top seven, what, sixth grade?
There as well.
What grade is this? Because McCord stops at sixth grade, right?
Stops at eighth grade. No, I was wrong, I'm sorry, they stopped at...
It's seventh.
Seven, seven?
It's top one, seven.
Okay. Okay, you're right.
Why would Kildare be so high? Better teachers?
I don't know, I wouldn't say better teachers.
Aren't they, are they off-riding?
I don't know that, dude. Do they have a four-day week at Kildare?
Yeah.
See, I think that's, yeah.
What grade do they go to?
So, if we go four days a week, they'll count 39 kids?
Well, I don't know. Well, there's just a lot of parents.
But it is good data. I mean, we are looking at how do we contact these families and see if we can get some input from them on, you know...
Back to your previous slide.
Yes, sir.
The 250-some kids, if my calculations are wrong, are about $1.6 million that we're losing.
That would be about right.
So, how are you going to make that up?
1.6 million. So, yes, so that's a good question. We are not implementing a hiring freeze per se, but we're talking about if people are resigning or retiring, how do we stack that up? Because right now, it could be less students, so we have smaller class sizes than we historically have in years past. So, we have time to...
1.6 is a lot of money.
It's a lot of money. You're not wrong, you're not wrong. That's one thing, we're looking at contracts. We've met with, you said, more federal program contracts, with what we can get out of any contracts.
About 25 teachers.
Or support positions that we'll just have to look and see how we're stacked up.
I mean, that's, that's, when you said to the day we had 25 show up, and that's out of the deal. So, I mean, we have really...
Right, so that's a good discussion. So, this is just our October 1. There'll be a midterm allocation that comes out. We'll do an assessment of our district involvement and the students we're serving. The week, or it was the week after October 1, October 1, I think it was a Thursday or Friday, I can't remember. But that Monday afterwards in our registrations, and we enrolled 24 kids into our districts.
So, the 256 is 24 less.
Yeah, but, and we may have lost them since then. But that's just our, we, I think that story is we have a high mobility, a higher mobility for a lot of our students, and we probably have them here past, and they are coming and going. And they, the statement, we take a snapshot picture on October 1 where you're at, that includes butts in the seats, kids there, who you're serving. And if they're gone for suspension, or a doctor's appointment, or a dentist appointment, we miss.
Well, if your, if your class size is down so bad in high school, which means... What is the class size now at one average in high school?
Uh, we have that, I have that in my email. I don't want to report it, it could be wrong. But we're, we're looking at secondary class sizes. Well, we're looking at all class sizes, honestly.
So, when does the state ask for it again?
They'll do it at the end of December for the January midterm. Yeah, midterm, midterm allocation, so...
So, you'll get a new number?
We'll get a new number. It's, so it's just kind of a wave, you know, you just ride that wave, it adds and flows. But, I mean, Rob brings a good point. We, I know we talked about this with Erica and Jennifer, that we scrutinize every purchase and we scrutinize every position. As it comes open, you know, we don't have to knee jerk and go riff right now. That's not what we're talking about. But, but we have questions, we have to answer. Why are 250 kids not here? And why are they picking other schools? Maybe it has nothing to do with Pompous City Public Schools, maybe it's just jobs or move a family. I have a lot of anecdotal data when we check kids out. We ask them, parents aren't in an obligation to tell us, and where are you going, what's happening? And some of it's moving, change of placement, custody, job changes, so there's...
When would you have to consider a riff, if you have to, timing-wise?
I would say if our midterm came in, let's say we lost another 250 kids by...
I mean, 150, 250.
If it's still 250, it will be all right. Yeah, it will be all right.
I wonder how many of those kids are in sports, and then go somewhere else. Do you think so many? Because of that open transfer thing?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I think so. You know, I've heard in the past that kids have, you know, I guess something like our sports or our coaches or something, and then they'll transfer.
I think that's probably where you're seeing the numbers for Blackwell. I can't promise you that all five of those are, but I know a sizable portion of those are related to maybe directions we went with staffing or our extracurriculars. We are trying to work on reversing that and building on culture and setting a new culture.
All making high standards.
But, in today's climate, guys, it's parents' choice, and parents choose, and we have a school this year to have to position ourselves as we are the best option, and here's why. So, we've got to be thinking about our marketability and outcomes we're seeing in our students and... But to answer your question, Rob, and I'm, I think it'd be way too soon to think that we can absorb a lot of that.
You can absorb 250, 100%.
We can absorb that with attrition. Now, your class size may go from 15 kids to 25 kids, but part of it, that's kind of what the numbers we're accustomed to. All right, well, any other questions or discussions about enrollment? It's not the best news, but I'm going to be transparent and tell you this is where our reality is, and this is how we're going to tackle it and move forward. I'd like to open the district update real fast. Some good news, this is, this line graph here is our elementary star rating proficiency. We do this star assessment three times each year. It's kind of hard to read here, but right here, this very far right dot, this is what our elementary students that were here last year that took the star reading test, where they scored at. And you can see, this is in the year, last year, where they were scoring at. So, a year ago, the kids that were fourth graders, that are now fifth graders, were scoring in this, I mean, it's all, all aggregate data on every elementary student. So, you can see our beginning of the year data is the highest it's been in the last, since prior to the fall, '21, '22. So, a lot of optimism to believe that our academic scores are going to, we're poised for excellent growth this year there. So, I think we're starting to see some of our learning loss, trying to, some of our intervention plans coming to fruition in reading and math, kind of a similar story here. Here were, here's where we were scoring at the beginning of the year last year in math. These are kids that were in Pompous City Public Schools in elementary a year ago to where they started out this school year. So, we've got tremendous upside, I think, for the district for this upcoming year academically. You can see, looking at prior fall scores, we have the one here in '21, '22. We have '22, '23. I don't know if that's, I can't read that. I got to get my vote, my vote. But, the story is, the data is telling us that our kids and teachers, we are, we should see better scores academically. If our kids grow like they should grow, and we follow the processes and plans we have in place with our elementary students moving forward. I do not have this data for secondary, because we've kind of been all over the place. Last year, you guys approved the purchase and utilization of IXL, assessment data that they have done their first round of testing this month. So, we'll have our first year data that I can show and report out to this board at the end of this year. But then next year, I'll be able to show you year-to-year comparisons and how we're going and tracking that way. Jackson Sheets, if you didn't notice, national mayor semifinalist, won a few across the state of Oklahoma that he recognized. He was going to be here, but they have a rehearsal for orchestra concerts, so I told him to come to our November board meeting so we can present a plaque and read all of his accomplishments. Poe Hyde Senior. I, history of Pompous City, we used to have a number of these every year. I'd like to see that return back, but phenomenal young man. And I think one of the things we need to be doing is boards recognizing outstanding academic achievements when we have this. This is Jackson in front of his orchestra class in the new orchestra concert hall classrooms, Ms. Cochran and the other orchestra directors and Principal Tang there. I talked to you guys in my memos, and our childcare survey, looking around the childcare needs in our district and community. Lieutenant Governor Vanel was here in the early beginning of September. Jennifer Dine and I attended that meeting with a number of other community partners and leaders. And he really pressed upon the urgent need of childcare availability in rural Oklahoma, that it's not just a Pompous City problem, it's kind of a widespread problem. And what it got us to thinking is there's still a continued need for childcare amongst our staff. So, I sent this out, an updated survey. We did this in the year last year, just to see if anything's changed. Very similar response and similar numbers to what we had a year ago, not a year ago, but last spring. But you can see out of 150 responses, 32% said yes, that they will or have need for childcare. That's about 48, no, I'm sorry, not 48, 32, it's like 42 respondents that said yes to that. Were having childcare or achieve PCPS childcare partnership with someone influence your decision for future family growth? So, that's basically asking, would you have more Wildcats if we had childcare available? There you can see about 45% said yes or maybe to that, which you can use math, about 75 respondents that can say that. If Pompous City Public Schools had a five-star childcare center, that's a DHS ranking. Five stars the highest, the, there's a couple of five-star facilities in Pompous City, including the Pioneer Tech one and Child Development Center that's just right across the street here. From those times and those dates, for newborns to three, would you utilize this? 68 said yes, they would, out of 150 responses we collected there as well. 76 said no, they wouldn't know us. But, I thought it was, I think there's enough information there that we still have an obligation to pursue investigating those services. I propose, and Erica's worked, reached out to ENA, that we go visit their childcare facilities. ENA and Sand Springs both provide childcare for their staffs through their school district. Wanted to see how that works and how that service goes. ENA seems to have a really strong one, it's a really positive benefit for their community and their district. And it's not a, it's not a drain on resources, if you will. It's actually something that helps bolster the district in a way. So, I think that it would be in our best interest to go check out ENA later this month and see how those are in, and get some good information there. District companies continue, just a few notes here. I have, wanted to make sure I said thank you to Pompous City Concrete and UML Foundation in this board meeting for sponsoring free admission for all the high school students to come attend the softball game, softball regional for the first time in 27 years. And I told the churches that canceled their youth groups or moved their youth groups Wednesday night in Wiltshire Barlesville, that I would thank them, and that was Connect in St. Luke's and New Point. I did call all the churches and ask them if they had a youth, or they considered having it at the field so we could support high school kids, and those churches said yes, they would do that. Really appreciated that. Because it was the first time in almost three decades to do that, and I thought that was really cool. And also, thank you, thank you to Pompous City and our school district. I was commenting, I think I saw every varsity coach attending one of those games in support of our softball program. A number of building principals, a number of our central office directors, you as board members were there. I really appreciate that. And I know our program appreciated that. I thought that was really neat to see them have success and us to respond with support there. We are internally going through accreditation and state reporting. I was talking to Don about this before the meeting started. October's a big month, not only with this accreditation, with the State Department of Ed, but we have a number of reports, class size verification, personnel reports, things like that that we just have to get done. It's required a lot of man hours and a lot of attention. More ratings been helping to do that quite a bit. You can see there are visiting, you know, public schools in the 24. I think this is just a good practice for us. Last year, I had opportunity to go see Barlesville and visit with their superintendent and admin, just kind of see how they ran and just ask them questions. And I learned a lot in that. I think it's really cool that EUN is welcoming us to come check them out and see what they do, best practices, and see if they can do stuff that can bring back to us. Pompous Politics, this is a neat event for the end of this month at City Hall 12:00 p.m. Basically gives a state reunion of the school district. We'll be with Pioneer Tech and University Center in NOC. And we'll be, show about 10, 15 minutes this year, highlights for our school district. So, it's a good opportunity for EUN to come and hear a little bit more in-depth of what's happening in the school district. October 31st on Halloween, I hope you put this down, we're doing a ribbon cutting for the concert hall classrooms. We'll have the community there 11:30 a.m. and cut that ribbon. And I think they'll have some students practicing in their classrooms during that time. Then I am going on November 7th to Barlesville to see, this is a Saturday, the State Student Council Convention. And just the number of students that participate, schools that participate and how we're going to do that because we were selected to host a year from now in Palm City. And that's going to be a logistical challenge, but I think what we really need to showcase our community and our school district. And we'll have probably lots of discussion as a board on how logistically we accommodate that. But I'll be asking them in their administration how, how they hosted. We are, as a team, also talking with NOC and the University Center about concurrent enrollment barriers. We have a number of kids that want to do concurrent enrollment but cannot afford the fees associated, the books associated with it. A number of communities like Blackwell, Perry, ENAD have foundations set up that cover the cost for those. So what I'm asking, exploring, if there's ways that we can get that similar thing that happened here in Palm City that would remove those costs for kids to be able to attend that through the University Center. So we had a meeting with the University Center Foundation last week, me and Dr. Hopkins, I thought it was positive. But our goal for this would be, can we have something rolled out by August? I don't know if that'll happen, but NOC is willing to help us and the University Center seemed open to discussing it. So let's, let's see where that goes. Transportation barriers, we talked about this with our pre-K students. We don't currently transport our pre-K kids on buses, we're exploring that. If that's something we can start looking at providing to help try to entice more families to choose sending their kids to pre-K. We see a number of our kindergartners that are seeing success have had experience in a pre-K center. And if we can't get them in the pre-K center, it sets our kindergarten teachers back and those kids back quite a bit. And then I sent a memo last week, I hope you looked at it, the AI, how it's changing the world. If you did not listen to that podcast, that was all 100% AI-generated. It was, I had it generated for this board presentation, but it's incredible. I was able to go to the USSA conference in Tulsa on October 3rd. And there was a presenter that talked all day about artificial intelligence and its implications on the future of our children and the students we're serving. And the big question was asked, will AI take my job? And the presenter who's worked with AI within the last five years said, no, it will not take your job. But the person that knows how to use AI will take your job. So I just kind of, I thought set the tone that we've got to be thinking about how we're introducing that as, for our kids and utilizing these tools every day. There's new tools and new concepts that come out that can really create new efficiencies in the way we do things. So that podcast being one of them, just the way that it takes that data and turns it into a podcast was pretty cool. I talked to you last week that Phillips 66 was here to review exterior signage, proposed exterior signage. This is the rendering of what that might look like. First, the Phillips 66 building there, you guys have a GMP on your board agenda that is approved today. This will happen. With the caveat, masquerade, I did ask them and Phillips 66 agreed, can we flip the logo placement where the Wildcats on top? And that way if they don't own a reunion in 10 years and we get to find a new sponsor, can we have that space? And so they were fine, they did care, they just thought it was really cool. Two quotes from that meeting with the Houston reps. One quote was, this is something Phillips 66 has been trying to do in the collegiate level for years and we can't believe it's happening in the high school. Another quote was, I would wish my kids could come to a high school like this and that we don't have anything like it. So I think it's very forward thinking from this board. You guys casted a bold vision and I think it's been really neat to watch corporate partnerships up on one side to help us bring those opportunities for high school kids. So that's a rendering of it there. And on the board packet today too, is a board resolution to announce Ward 5 will be open for filing in December. This is a board map here, it's a terrible, terrible map. So I tried to get a better location, I got an even worse map from University of Oklahoma. So basically, this is Don Newsom's ward that follows along Prospect. South R Street is really the west boundary. Con Road kind of is east boundary, but it's all kinds of in and out and jogs. Prospect seems to be a good south boundary there. And then it follows along the railroad tracks here and goes down past Liberty Road and back down south a little bit more. So we can get you the link to that map. That's still kind of hard to read on the computer, but it's a better picture than that. But you can see Ward 5 up here, kind of the northwest side of our school district. And when I said it's kind of lots of jogs and boundary areas, I'm not lying, there's a lot of them around it on those areas. So what's the process for the filing? If you guys approve this resolution today, we will push your, issue a press release and legal notice. It has to be displayed in newspapers and on social media. We'll have to get that to the K County Election Board, Lori Graham's in charge of that by November 21st. I think she'll probably have that done this week. The filing period, this is important, does, will open on Monday, December 2nd at 8:00 a.m. And closes on Wednesday, December 4th at 5:00 p.m. And you have to do it in Newcurt, cannot just bring it to our office. It has to go to the election board in Newcurt. If there's any withdrawal, like if someone registered and they said, oh wait, I had to change a heart or they registered and they're not in the right ward or there's, you know, conflicts there, they have until Friday, December 6th to protest that. That comes with a cost, they have to pay $250 contest fee to have that evaluated with that. And you have to provide evidence as well. If there are more than three candidates that run, three or more candidates, the first election will be on February 11th. That's only if there's three or more of the candidates. If there's only two or fewer, I guess if there's one, then it's not an election. If there are two candidates, then the election, the general election will be on April 1st. So if we have more than three candidates, they'll narrow it down to the two in February for the election, the general election on April 1st. And it's a 50 plus one vote, so whoever has 50% plus one vote wins the election. Again, this term of this office will be from 25 to 2030, it's a five-year term. And I don't know if we'll have a special board meeting right after that, but our first scheduled meeting that that board member would sit on would be the April 14th meeting, that night at 6:00 p.m. And this should be 2025, not 2024, that's my year. So if we had to have a special board meeting, let's say after April 1st, because we had an issue come up, then that board member, that one that raised would sit on that special board meeting. Any questions about the election or resolutions for an election? All right. Policies, we are set to approve all the policy, I hope set to approve all the policies that we presented last month. We had posted those on social media and on the website and we received zero public comments during that time on those policies that were presented. There were two late additions that Lori found that we wanted to bring to the board's attention to see if we can just get those added. That would be the revision to Policy 1.3, 2.0. We would like to delete the video conferencing paragraph. That's, basically allows the board to meet by video conference. It was added during COVID and now it's no longer an applicable way to meet in open meetings. So just to clean up, just to leave that paragraph if the board's in agreement with that. And then she did want to add a line that specifically states that in a special board meeting, there is not new business, which is consistent with the open meeting law and something that OSSBA advised us of doing there. I don't like bringing new policies to you like this, but since we're cleaning up all the policies, what makes sense is do a little housekeeping on those two policies at the same time. They basically, I mean, they're in there, it's just really wastening because we don't, we digitally buy video conferences anymore. That's not a, they'll be open to being law anymore. And we don't have open for new business during the special board meetings. Any questions about those two policies? We also have a tennis court policy that this board will need to review and decide on when our project is complete. At this time, I think we probably need to discuss more as a board on community needs and what we want to see done for the tennis project. We have included a few policy examples in our packet of what could be a tennis policy. Where basically we wanted to add the tennis courts with ball in line with the consistency of using the facilities of baseball stadium or softball stadium. And then we can have a similar rental agreement of those. In our agreement with the city, the city did want us to leave at least eight of those courts open to the public. With the caveat that school business took precedent, obviously, if we had practiced that people just could walk in and say, I'm the public and I'm going to use these courts, that school business took precedent, but that would be reflected in the policy as well. But those eight south courts would be open to the public. But as a board, we can decide how we want to do that and what, what do we think could use a community yard in accessing that tennis court facility moving forward. So I do think it would be important that we do have a tennis court policy adopted though, so that by the time we open this facility, we as administrators can properly use that space and ensure that the district's protected from any liability and that it's equitable amongst the community and communicated in advance.
Is that the courts only now that the locker rooms are there?
Right, yeah, yeah. The city only wanted access to the acres with the public and when there's not school business, after school hours or whatever. So it's mom and dad wanted to go play tennis together or private coach wanted to use the court, that they had the spaces and still, like they had the private.
So are you proposing up a table that one?
I, I recommend we just discuss this more, yeah, so yeah, table it forward. Yeah, just one vote on that. Any questions, discussion? Either I did really good or you guys were just keeping it all along with it, so I'll take it as I did the others. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item will be is five, consider and take action on the board policy changes as opposed during the super tennis before. So we're going to revolve that 2.8. Do you have a motion for that?
I have a motion.
Thank you, Judy, you have a second?
Judy's second.
Nancy's second. Any other discussion? Real call.
Robin Riley?
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Judy Truitt?
Aye.
Anna Roland?
Dawn Nizam?
Aye.
Thank you all. Next item is consent agenda, motion required for the approval of the consent agenda is printed or is amended. Organs may however, call for a separate vote on any or all files listed on the consent agenda. Three other minutes on September 9th, 2024 board meeting and September 13th, 24th, special board meeting. And then contract meeting is under 10,000 and surplus for resolution. We have a lot on that surplus, weren't we?
I'll move, we approve all that.
Okay, thanks.
I'll second.
You have a second? Just about five vehicles. Okay.
I'll move, we approve all that.
Okay, thanks.
I'll second.
You have a second? Yes, I got you. Call, real call.
Anna Roland?
Aye.
Judy Truitt?
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Robin Riley?
Aye.
Dawn Nizam?
Aye.
Number seven, action items. Consider and take action on the following district's financial workforce. Okay, good. Hi Nancy, me, Robin's real nice, it's all.
Does it find anything problems, Robin?
No.
I'll approve the, I'll approve the.
Good motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll approve the motion to approve.
You have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Robin, you have a second, any other discussion? None, real call.
Nancy Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Dawn Nizam?
Aye.
Anna Roland?
Aye.
Judy Truitt?
Aye.
Robin Riley?
Aye.
Motion passed. Next item will be number two, consider and take action on the recognition of the following events. A is American Education Week. B is the National Education Support Professional Days. C is the National Native American Heritage Month. And D is the Celebrate Freedom Week. I have a motion to approve these items. Motion from Nancy?
Second.
Aye. Any other discussion? None, real call.
Dawn Nizam?
Aye.
Robin Riley?
Aye.
Judy Truitt?
Nancy Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Anna Roland?
Aye.
Thank you, item passed. Next item will be three, consider and take action on the approved policy changes addition that presented to the board on August 9th, 2024, break of board meeting listed in commentary below. Do you have a motion to approve this item?
I'm not approving, I have it approved.
Thanks Judy.
I'll second.
Second, Nancy?
I've got a question on this one.
Yes, go ahead.
I assume that all of these are basically in conjunction with the laws of the state of Oklahoma, correct Adam?
Correct.
Yes, sir. Okay. Answer my question, don.
Okay, thank you. Real call. Oh, yes.
Sorry, I have a question on one, it is just the wording, it's just like really minor on this one. It's the policy for selection and instructional media materials, center material, 4.2 through 4.0. It's on page 46 of the packet that Lori gave. Anyway, there's a, there's a sentence here and the whole one said, books or other reading matter of sound factual authority shall not be prescribed or moved to library shelves or classroom because of partisan doctrinal or approval or disapproval. And then the provisions says, books or other reading material of sound factual authority shall not be excluded or removed from library shelves or classrooms because of partisan or doctrinal approval or disapproval. My question, I mean, this could just be my poor prayer, but doesn't prescribe means that you are giving it with the word instead of excluded be included? So it would be, shall not be prescribed, instead of prescribed, it would be included or removed? Instead of excluded or removed, because excluded and removed would be the same? No, nevermind, I think I just talked myself out of it.
I was going to say, that's either an OSSBA or an ORA board, they have a team of attorneys.
I think talking it out with everyone staring at me, I love talking about it, it all makes it.
Tell you, Adam didn't write that policy, so you paid someone much more for it.
No, and I, I think, yeah, everyone's.
All right, real call.
Judy Truitt?
Nancy Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Anna Roland?
Aye.
Robin Riley?
Aye.
Dawn Nizam?
Aye.
Item four, consider and take action on the resolution to K County Election Board calling for the annual election of board education members in Board 5. Do you have a motion to approve this item?
I have a motion for item four.
Thank you all. Any other discussion?
If we vote against it, then Don stays.
That's what I was thinking.
No, it won't happen.
That'd be interesting, I don't know what would happen on a school, we refuse to do.
We refuse to have that election.
I don't think we can. Real call.
Robin Riley?
Aye.
Dawn Nizam?
Aye.
Anna Roland?
Aye.
Judy Truitt?
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Thank you all. Item five, consider and take action on the 24, 25, Palm City. School comprehensive districts academic plan and site improvement title one plans.
I'd like to make a motion for, also to say, thank you Terry for all the work that you did to put all that together with your team. And it was really informational and very well put together, thank you.
Thank you.
I turned it into a podcast, it was really great.
Oh, cool.
I had a worn-out reading it.
Oh, I'll second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Real call.
Robin Riley?
Aye.
Dawn Nizam?
Aye.
Judy Truitt?
Aye.
Anna Roland?
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Item five. Item six, consider and take action on the notification of an approval of bank account authorization signers due to personal changes.
Don, if you don't mind, I had, I got some, I had a question asked on why board members weren't on all these accounts. And we had a, we got, I didn't know the answer to it. I had Joe Erica asked Julie Miller at OSSBA and her response was that the ones that the checks are written on are the ones that has the board members names on it. So, and then the rest of the store. So, uh, and then the rest of the story, we've done that way. We can always add you guys, but there's no checks that are written on those accounts. They're basically deposit accounts. This is what I'm thinking they were.
So it's just an information archive?
Yeah, that was the written response.
If we wanted to know what was in that, it would be a phone call.
Really, it's the board clerk and the president that have to be on there because your signature is on the checks that come from that account, from the operating account and the approval from the board. So they have to, we have everybody on it.
Is that, is that what the personnel changes were in reference to that they had with that?
So treasury, that access, it's our, our investment accounts. If anything, whatever happened to me, she could have authority to do.
Right.
Good.
I make a motion for approval for item six.
Thank you, you have a second?
I do second.
Nancy, all right. No other questions, real call.
Judy Truitt.
Aye.
Anna Roland.
Aye.
Robin Riley.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Don Nizam.
Aye.
Next item will be seven, consider and take action to approve the construction manager pricing report from Rick Scott Construction, the P66M Academy Exterior Improvement Project.
Don, I forgot to mention, no school funds are going to be used for this. Yep, this is all going to be from the Phillips 66 donations. Fund 81's gift center download, so this came from the Phillips 66. So Callie, make sure you put that, this was a gift money, not, not school money.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second, Nancy. All right. Any other discussion? None, real call.
Don Nizam.
Aye.
Anna Roland.
Aye.
Robin Riley.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Judy Truitt.
Aye.
Motion passed. Next item will be consider and take action on change order number one from Rick Scott Construction on the West Middle School and Wildcat Academy project.
Put on a motion.
Yeah, we need one.
Yeah. Yeah, we need a second.
I'll second that.
Oh, Nancy? You made it, okay. And Anna? Any other discussion? Real call.
Anna Roland.
Aye.
Robin Riley.
Aye.
Don Nizam.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Judy Truitt.
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you. Next item will be consider and take action on the following contracts agreements. They use the, the quote from inferior end prize LLC for refrigerant for the district's HVAC units. They use a quote from Justin Silver Concrete, Concrete Work at the High School. Oh, when's that going to start?
We can get the process going as soon as it's approved.
Okay.
Wait, what's, where's that, how we have that long side? No, it's in front.
A horseshoe sidewalk.
Yeah.
It goes up to the, the ramps around that.
I do have a question on that one, Don, but we don't know.
Does it go all the way from Overbrook?
So. When that, it would be. When you're on Overbrook and you're looking at the, the original main entrance of the high school, there's doorways that come from the commons that we've taken when there's the Hall of Fame, Eggwood, or back to school teacher meeting. It's the sidewalk that curves around and goes to the concert hall. There's a, it mirrors itself on the other side, mirrors to the Fine Arts, the old Fine Arts Building. So they're pretty beat up from years and years. It, it'll include some ADA access in the Overbrook with truncated domes and so it'll really clean it up.
Perfect. That's pretty bad.
Do you have a question on that?
Yeah, uh, if I'm not mistaken, in the building fund, I would think we, in the property committee, we said it should come out from the bond issue, not from the building fund. Now, I realize that is just in the, the wording of where it's paid for. I'm not, no, it's the project itself.
Yeah, right.
But if I remember right, we talked about it, that it should come from the two, the million dollars or the 250 that we, we kept. It should not come out of the building fund, right?
Yes.
Okay? I mean, that, that won't stop the project.
No.
From going on.
She'll have, she'll have.
To have just enough paragraph described.
Yeah, it's basically, yeah. Who was talking about?
So the concrete, is that what you're talking about, is coming out of?
Yeah, Justin Silver.
Okay.
The 43,000. Because we'd saved 250,000 in the sidewalk bond issue.
Okay.
The rest we've turned loose to give back to some of the other projects.
Okay.
But this talks, it comes out of the building fund, which I don't think that's what the property committee agreed to.
So do we need to say something different on that now?
I think that, I think that just being in the description where it's paid for is really not an issue, is it, Don? I don't, I think it is, on whether to approve the project or not. It's how it's paid for.
What kind of finance?
It should come out of the bond issue.
Bond issue.
Yeah, bond issue, finance.
Yeah. Do we have to have a?
No.